Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education's regular meeting of July 19th. We'll have the pledge of allegiance in a moment. Silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have the roll call, Mrs. Ruth?
Certainly, Mrs. Cathers?
Here.
Mr. Shea?
Right.
Mrs. Muller?
Here.
Mr. Savick?
Here.
And Mr. Zvisky?
Here.
Thank you. Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. We need a motion to adopt the agenda and the addendum to the consent agenda as it is written. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
No.
Uh, Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Item five. We have a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a renewal levy tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation. The first of two resolutions necessary to place the renewal of a permanent improvement levy on the November 11th ballot. This is not a new tax, and it is not an increase of an existing levy. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, Jane, can you just talk about what's on the agenda and sort of step in the normal process that we've done this past?
Yeah, typically, this takes two board meetings. We would have this initial board meeting, and then I would take the resolutions to the county auditor's office, and they would certify our valuation and exactly how much we would be collecting for this levy. And then the second resolution is then includes that language, and that's to actually get the renewal on the ballot. Um, the auditor's office has been gracious enough to save us another board meeting, and so they've come here today that they'll be able to certify the amount to be collected in one board meeting. Is that helpful?
Can you just explain the difference of this one and then the one that appears later on in the agenda?
Oh, well, this is the one that just, um, basically is declaring it necessary because our PI levy is, um, running out. So the first is to say it is necessary for us to, um, get, um, the raise, um, additional, well, it's not additional to rate, to get this on the, um, ballot. It's necessary for us to begin the process of this levy, so, um, renewal of the PI levy. It's, it's, this is by law. I, um, I probably leave something out, but it's really just, um...
You mean the second one that sets the dollar mark?
The second one uses the dollar amount received from the county auditor's office and then puts it on the ballot. Yeah, the second one actually is the motion that you're putting it onto the ballot. The first one is just starting the process.
Okay.
And I'd like to note that at the end of this levy, current, it's would be 55 years old and passed it every year. So, thank you to the community for that. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Okay, item six is staff and community recognition. I don't believe we have any this evening, and I don't see any cards for public participation. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. Mrs. Ruth, your output, the treasurer's report, please.
Okay, one moment. Can I, if I put this together, I think it is rolling, so the auditor's office. Do you mind if I do this quick, or would you rather?
Do you mind a motion?
I do whatever you need to do.
Whatever. Are you sure, because I don't want to... For those of you who are not in attendance, she's filling out the forms and signing them before the auditor.
I'm so sorry, then this is what you need to sign.
Then I'm signing.
And if he wants to, do you want him? Thank you, and I'll do my reports.
So they touch things that can't be filled out at the time, so...
Yeah, we're not allowed to do that. Okay, I can give my quick report while this moves forward. Um, it's obviously, uh, June 30th, our year end, and we closed. I just want to, um, do a quick overview on where we ended up. Our goal, to be conservative, is to always be just a little bit low on our revenue estimates and a little bit high on our expenditure estimates. It just helps us all sleep better at night. The revenues, our receipts were about 1% over estimates as a whole. One thing that's usually gone off so much, that was where our fee income, some of that had to do with the fact that we were getting a lot of catch-up fees, because if you recall, we didn't have any fees charged last year. So there, you know, it's just a lot of catch-up. So that was some of the one with some, um, prior year receipts that were at the end of June. So, um, with, on the expenditure side of things, um, just on a cash basis, we were within enough 3.5% of estimates. Um, obviously, we always allow, have to have a little bit more in our budget to allow for outstanding purchase orders. Um, the second page of what I provided to shows the outstanding conferences as of June 30th in the general fund. Something that's a little annoying this year is that our, um, um, our insurance, we never got the bill for it, so, um, I have that encumbered, and I'm still waiting. Hopefully, I'm supposed to get it tomorrow, so I can pay for July, um, tomorrow. So, I mean, obviously, we're insured. I just, that was a cash flow issue that would have made quite a difference. Once the POs are considered, though, we're within 0.3% of our estimates. So we, we did pretty good. Um, and then I did put in the five-year, I, it's behind it, just the flow of the cash, so you could see what the actuals look like in the five-year, and then rid of the estimates. And, um, we're, we're in very good shape. I think we have to acknowledge the offset of the SFR funds into our general fund, um, has really improved our stability. We did, we're able to pay for some of our expenditures and extra services using SFR funds. Some items that are going to be coming up in, um, that are under for approval, I think I have them attached as well. The updated certificate of receipt, um, was presented. The only real change is there is, um, at the end of the year, the auditor asks us to please estimate what our outstanding purchase orders are. So I do that, so that they have an estimate of what our beginning cash balances will be, um, but then I fix that and put the actuals in, so that's what you'll find. And then, um, the reversal of the year-end advances, I believe at year-end, I, um, we just had to advance into several of our grants, and we're just simply returning those back to the general fund. Um, and then I already spoken about the permanent improvement levy. So unless there are questions, that is the treasurer's report tonight. We're moving forward to a new year, so always exciting.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Okay, uh, executive session, does anybody, we will have one at the end. Does anyone need one now? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on a consent agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Quick question for Hal. We approve like the supplementals over two or three months, like mainly, you know, like for the fall. Is there any way to pull together a final fall supplemental list of everything?
Yeah, we have all that already.
Our coaches and volunteers, so it's one consolidated version?
We have all that spreadsheet back there, obviously.
We have that at the end of the week, over the next week.
I will get it to you tomorrow morning.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick? Did I say that backwards? Okay, um, Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Under new business, the handbooks, we need a motion to adopt the student, athlete, parent handbook, and the coaches handbook. May I have a motion, please? Motion. Do you have a second?
Right now.
Discussion?
Were there any notable updates to these that we should be aware of?
I do not have those. If there, I mean, I, I'd have to get back with Mark. None that I am aware of.
I didn't see anything much different.
Part of our strategic plan is to take a deep dive into these moving forward.
Sure.
Uh, so in my mind, it's, it's status quo, and then take that deep dive here to supplement here in the handbook, for sure, which is, we've had a lot of discussions on that.
Yeah, I mean, the one overarching thing, sorry, they're pretty long, and I didn't have a lot of time to get through them, but, um, the one thing I did think about is with, um, the onboarding of Mr. Ostrander and that whole conditioning program. There's no reference to that, and then it's a coaching materials, we're not getting in both, because I know it's relatively new, so we just want to see that integrated on the go-forward, so we're getting the full kind of benefit of that, and that everybody's aligned, for sure.
And then Hal, kind of following up, there's anything in the coaches handbook on... With the, you know, one, the use of social media, um, and what, you know, goes on there for them, was that just covered under the district employee one and then...
It's definitely covered under our, our, our expectations and...
Is anything on, like, I know a lot of the subtle platforms they use for communication with the parents and athletes. I know a lot of them use Remind, there's a couple other ones they use, but then some we go to Facebook groups, and I know March Fight for Fat, every year, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'll have to, I'll have to go through...
The handbook says they will use Remind 101, I bet you think.
Yeah, I mean, okay. That, that is such a growing and a unique, you know, and personalized... Uh, what's the word I'm looking for? It's, it's like, there's 100 horses outside of the barn, and we need to go try to rein them all in. And so, uh, the key is, though, is are they, A, are they doing anything that would be a misconduct, certainly saying or doing? And secondly, you know, are they using it in the manner it was intended, I guess? Or are they using it frequently, right? Because I think what you guys are getting at is communication needs to get better between coaches and, and athletes and families.
Yeah.
It's kind of where this, I think, is, is key, where some do it, some don't.
Well, some, let's say, some still use, I'll say, Facebook is an open room without being closed.
Yeah, where it's way too public of a situation.
Yeah.
When they're just trying to deal within their certain number of athletes. See, I, 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 I agree with you, and it's, it's definitely on our, again, it's, part of that strategic plan goal is to rein all that in, to begin to, to help people and to begin to provide better upfront education to our coaches. Uh, there's some really good resources on ODE that have been pointed out to me that we shared with our coaches at the end of last year, when we had some of the discussion. Uh, obviously, we had meetings at the beginning of this year, but it's all kicking up, right? Like, right now, like this week, and it's all moving real fast, so...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I, I get what you're saying.
It's certainly hurting kids.
Well, social media is, is, is how you do it. It's a wonderful tool, and it's the most rotten tool that's ever been invented, depending on what happens and how it's used. And Facebook's evolved so many different ways over the last decade that it used to be, but we, we certainly would say Facebook's not a way that you, um, two-way communicate. It's kind of like Twitter, you know? People still do it, we need to get away from it. It's not a two-way communication, it's more of a, hey, let's, let's say the good things that are happening, let's show the good things that are happening, but it's not a way to, because people are going away from looking at that for that reason, right?
I think there's getting like more during the whole of COVID, of when we're trying to do the mass information, how people are trying to do so.
Exactly.
So there is some good news.
Yeah.
And then Hal, um, appendix O appeared blank, so we may just want to take a look at that. It said it was final forms instructions, but as I viewed on my phone, so maybe desktop was different, there wasn't, there were no instructions, it was just appendix O and then a blank page, so, maybe just want to follow up on that.
Absolutely.
But, um, and then I'm just curious, um, this is just a follow-up, so I don't forget. Um, Hal, is, there was reference to a positive alliance coaching style in there, and I have no idea what that is, so from, we don't have to address it here today, but I'd be interested in knowing what that is and just understanding how our coaches benefit from it, and, um, I just had no idea that that was a thing, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
All right, Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Okay, item B, under new business, a resolution authorizing employment of certain individuals granting temporary substitute licensure in accordance with post-bill 583. This is a continuation of the previous bill, and it takes through the 23, 24 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second? Second? Discussion?
Yeah, roll call, Miss President. Now, Hal, like I said, talk about 22, 23 school year, that's the one coming up, and then 23, 24 is the other one, so this is a two-year?
Yes.
Yeah, the legislature passed the ability for, uh, local boards to make a decision on using substitutes without a, essentially without a college degree, you know, if you choose, you can say you're staying there, so, so I'm recommending that we allow that, because we really benefited from that at the end of last year, last couple of years with...
Have you said some of our own standards we have?
Well, it's high school diploma, as long as we have a high school diploma. That's, that, yeah, that's what we worked on, 18 years old. Yeah, and clear background checks and all those types of things, yeah, for sure.
So with this, let's wait, pass it, they pass it for the two-schoolers, is that what they...
Correct.
Okay, and then, uh, I know we need bodies in the classroom, um, and sometimes you don't have an option, but essentially, sometimes it's a goal, like they can, sometimes what we need, um, only, only take that from experience.
Not sure where we're going with that, but, yeah, I understand. I mean, there's, yeah, depending on what, what's going on in the classroom and what that expectation is for that day.
But, you know, as we don't provide the, the quality teaching staff, um, that we would only have in prior years before COVID, you know, the expectations from the state testing still continue to increase, and yet we're not able to properly provide in all instances, uh, the proper teaching environment. So it does, that's one of those things you're doing coming to play to bridge the gap and how...
Well, really, what you're talking about is staff attendance versus the abilities of, um, our substitute teachers. Our substitute teachers come from all wakes of life, all backgrounds, all ages, uh, from senior citizens down to now anybody that's over the age of 18, which we don't have a lot of, most of them are in their twenties and, and, and mid-thirties and forties that, that are good people that just don't have the degree that we wanted to take advantage of, so... So, yeah, finding good, quality people in the whole world is a problem right now, and, uh, we want to continue to, you know, part of our, again, strategic plan is to even become better at, at training up our substitutes, that's been a gap. Uh, we know that's a gap, but it's, it's also, you know, drinking from a fire hose, they're coming fast and furious, and we need to get them in the classrooms and get them covered, because I've seen districts, uh, bigger districts, TPS, uh, Washington Local, where when you're short 25, 20 subs during a day, uh, it causes, causes major problems. Now, with that being said, the, the need to use as many subs as we needed coming out of COVID drastically dropped at the end of last year. In other words, like, we have a bigger pool than we've ever had before, believe, believe it or not, now with this group, and there were subs not even working, because, well, A, the teachers are, are here, but we were covered completely when we, when we, uh, did have big days, like a Friday or something like that.
That makes sense, I've had people say when that tax, you know, goes off, that needs them on.
Yep.
They've been to implement it, they still can't get it.
Yeah, and, and that was towards the end of the, the, the fourth quarter last year, that it definitely was like that. And if it was like that for us, I'm assuming it was probably like that for some other districts, because it's just, I mean, you're seeing right now, I mean, if you, you pay attention to what's going on in life, right? We're starting to see a wave of, couldn't find workers anywhere, and now they're laying off people left and right across the country. So we're, we're going into a whole, I think, opinion, a whole different landscape of personnel moving forward. We're still short on teachers, uh, there's still not a number of teachers going into the profession. It's way, way down, certainly in the state of Ohio and across the country. So that's going to continue to be a struggle that our profession, uh, deals with, but, but listen, I, I want those kids to have as quality of an education as possible, and we need to continue to, to help, uh, teachers understand that their planning for substitutes is a vital part of their job, and, uh, and then subs that they're not just glorified babysitters, that they actually want to get in there and, and do, do, and, and, but if you have to prioritize, prioritizes coverage, supervision and safety essentially, and then everything below it, getting up to teaching the actual subject if they happen to have a background in it, so...
And this, this resolution would just allow you to authorize the recommendation of employment as substitutes if we find ourselves in a situation where our need is not as great or the landscape has changed, we don't, we don't have to...
Well, yeah, but we're not, I mean, we're not, we're not getting to that. I mean, we're, if the people apply and we, you, uh, Mr. Fainwich interviews each of our subs, and he makes a determination whether that's a substitute he feels comfortable with, and then if it is, then they go on regardless, I mean, whether they, how they get assigned would take another hour, if you want me to get into how they're assigned, because there's multiple levels with building level, like some just want to work at an elementary or just want to work at the high school or whatever, so then there's teacher preference that, you know, they've had somebody that's been in their classroom, kind of understands how it works, and so they're very comfortable with that person, so then they get a priority rating, and there's some that we ban and block, and we don't let any come back. Like, that's our way to keep someone out that we are, that we've hired, but we are definitely not comfortable with after seeing them in action. We've done that countless times, um, and so they're blocked from being a sub at any of our buildings whatsoever.
I think that's the good, the stuff you said, uh, make us, you know, woman funding, that we all get the best one available to the classroom.
Well, absolutely, I mean, there is, there isn't a teacher in our district that doesn't want the best sub available to, to work in their classroom, they're not there, and, and they've got a keen eye for who those folks are, and, and staff talk, right? They, they know who's on time, who's the show, who actually engages the kids in the class. They do rise to the top, there's no doubt about it. And I'll tell you, we've had a lot of people that we brought in under this resolution in the past that have risen to the top, that are some fantastic people, where we go, you need to go back and get your teaching degree. You need to go back, because you've got a back for this, and you care about, you know, these kids, and it shows, and, and so, you know, it's not all of them, of course, but, but it's a lot of them, so...
This is just teaching the other...
Correct.
That's, that's part of the whole requirement, right?
Yeah, they, yes, and, and, yeah, yeah, there's, other than, other than paraprofessional, they have to, uh, for a sub, I think they're okay, but for to be hired, they need to, to, uh, be able to pass a test. The rest of them, really, as long as their E team passes background check, and, and we can hire them for most of the other ones, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Okay, item C, board-approved training. We need a motion to approve the attendance of board members at all of the 2022 OSBA conferences, allowing for the district to cover the registration fee, lodging, meals, and mileage as provided for in policy BHBA. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Quick question. We say all 2022, I know we've had some already that we approved, what would entail all 22, the remaining one?
The Northwest Conference on October 6th and Kepel Conference in November.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Item D, transportation contract. We need a motion to enter into transportation contracts with the following for the 22, 23 school year. The Batch family to St. Ursus, the Raymond family to St. Rosas, and the Dykema family to St. Franciscus Sales. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Helen, I know you always had to do a little kind of description worthy about by law, how this is, can you?
Yes.
Say that again?
It is by law. We must provide transportation.
And there's a certain deadline that they have to now, that they have to...
Correct.
You know, like, end of the calendar year, end of the first quarter of the...
30 days after the school knows, is aware that they're going there, something like that, like...
So someone like say, transition, someone plus the 30-day window?
Yeah, there's a window, and I made a P-30, but it's a number two.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, there's been, there's been major, major issues with this with some districts around the state. I mean, it's been a hot button for the last couple of years with ongoing, you know, private-public, you know, just differences, and when, when they were short bus drivers, where, where do you not transport, and some districts chose not to transport privates or whatever. I just want to say, we have, to my knowledge, we, I mean, other than a, a random, you know, misconfusion or something, we, we have always done what's right, and we have always provided that transportation. We will sometimes go out and hold the line as to the law, in terms of the distance, because there is a rule within, they have to be within a certain distance from, uh, looking at D, their home school to the private school.
30 minutes from their school of residence.
Okay.
So if they live in the star neighborhood, they'd normally live star, from star to whatever.
And we will go out and physically drive the quickest route we can get there. I mean, it's not like we try to, and again, on occasion, it's not always...
I say, do we, we used to provide, like, a bus to St. John's. Do we try to bus anything specific, or is it all pretty much 90, 100 percent to the...
I don't know if we, what we do.
No, we do, uh, I'll take it in lieu of, of transportation, and we don't take buses any longer to schools.
She hasn't had enough kids, and we don't have that, yeah.
And you know, we have one lingering or two lingering after that, we do that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I feel like we're doing the right thing for, for the law, for people and for the folks. I mean, we, we've certainly not been challenged, and, and if we make a mistake, we'll, we'll make it right, but it's been years since we've had a...
I know, right now, this is a really big issue in Slovenia, because they're dealing with public...
Yeah, other, as I'm saying, I know it's big out there, but here, so far, so good.
So...
Yeah, Slovenia's very upset. Any further discussion on transportation contracts? Sure. Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zvisky?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller?
Yes.
Policies, the following policies are being presented for their first reading. A recommendation of adoption will be made in August. Item F, disposal of materials. There are 73 books and 300 complete band uniforms. There are seventy-three books and three hundred complete band uniforms. May I have a motion to dispose of these things, please?
So moved.
A second?
Question.
Discussion? Yes, band uniforms will be sold for fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars and I think the raincoats are thirty.
And then the raincoats are separate.
I think it's through the boosters though, right there.
It's through the boosters and, um, current band members go first and then alumni goes second and then general public after that. At least that's what I understand. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sadek.
Yes.
Mr. Zviski.
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder.
Yes.
Item G, these are extracurricular trips. They are all for Model UN. They start in November and end in May. May I have a motion for this, please?
So moved.
A second?
Sorry.
Discussion?
Got a kind of quick question, kind of related to this, Hal. I mean, I know it's the, the coach buyers, some that turned in the request for transportation. There's like, like some, um, with issues with the, I'll say the football, Southern, Southern Rossford. Why passing more than provided for that this week in Pennhead Drive? That's, I mean, that would be a off-season, off-cycle thing, or could the coach have turned in and had transportation that, you know, by chance?
My knowledge, I don't think we've ever transported teams in some of these summers, but I've heard of Dean maybe.
Some volunteer thing, right, which would.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess I, I mean, if it's, I don't know how many kids they took, they were the roster and I know.
I know when they have these scheduled scrimmages, they're part of the schedule, those we provide this, I assume this is.
I, I think.
Somehow considered different and not, in that, in world.
That they are technically not in season.
But even during the school year.
So, yeah, that's, that's the main one. We do have a few like volleyball trips that went to Fort Winnie or something like that, that we did a special um, motion for, but no, it is for these local ones that aren't in season for sure, we, we have.
I knew there was a reason why, just could not take place in that.
Okay, further discussion on trips? Roll call.
Mr. Zviski.
Yes.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers.
Yes.
Mr. Sadek.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder.
Yes.
Item H, the Midwest Regional ESC Agreement. Motion to approve agreements with Midwest Regional Education Service Center for visually impaired services provided to students in the Oregon City School District at the cost of six thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars plus nine hundred dollars for mileage. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
Hal, is this, uh, um, the same Midwest Regional ESC that we've used for these services in the past? So this is not new?
They're, they're essentially the only place that has the, uh,
Okay.
certified individuals, so we've had longstanding relationships since twenty years ago when I was special ed director, yeah.
And I assume we're happy with them? I know it sounds like they're the only option.
Well, kind of, kind of the only option, but they've done a great job. They, we have, we have been very, very happy with them. I mean, Ms. Kosick's right here and so, you know, she, she.
Woo.
I know it is. The OF, the, uh, the, the, I'm sorry, the visually impaired services from Midwest, from Midwest. We're happy with their services and.
They have a fantastic, yeah, that's Dan Z.
It's, yeah, see, Dan's been with us since I was here twenty years ago. I mean, he's, he's a wonderful man, so.
Yeah, and he's the only one that is certified, that's licensed ESC with that person um, in that field that can come this way.
Yeah.
And this is an annual cost that listed here? Okay. Thank you.
And it's been up and down depending on the number of, uh, kids that we've had visually impaired. I, I couldn't say, are we lower now with our numbers than we used to be?
He also five with me.
Yeah, I thought we've had a couple that have graduated and, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Mr. Sadek.
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Zviski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder.
Yes.
Item I, a resolution declaring intent to proceed with the election on the question of a renewal of a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation. A final rev- resolution required to replace the renewal of a permanent improvement levy on the November eleventh ballot. This is not a new tax or an increase of an existing levy. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Okay.
Discussion?
The, the only thing I would add is, and I'll make sure each of you get this, the only thing I've added is, um, that the, the amount that will be collected annually, which they certified was one point one million, five hundred dollars. And it's based on our current assessed valuation of six hundred and sixty million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand and seven hundred and eighty. So, so basically it's one.
Number one more time?
Which one, the, how to correct like? Oh, six hundred and sixty, three, six, seven, seven, eighty. That is our full valuation. So we're bringing roughly a little over a million dollars, one point one million dollars a year as a renewal.
And it's permanent improvements, that's.
Permanent improvements, excuse me, yes, it's our permanent improvement fund at renewal.
Anything further? Roll call.
Mr. Sadek.
Yes.
Mr. Zviski.
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers.
Yes.
Mr. Shea. And Mrs. Mulder.
Yes.
Item J, disposal of equipment and materials. Those items listed on the June twenty-first agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And Superintendent Tuford, this is Greg, are you up?
Uh, just a couple things. One, I want to, I guess, bring to your attention that we will be moving forward with our YMCA partnership for second grade swimming. If you recall, I think it was the eighteen, nineteen school year, we started this, what I had hoped to be an annual thing that, you know, second graders got to participate in, which was go to the YMCA during school and swim, take swim lessons. So we did that for a year, COVID hit, and then we didn't do it for two more years. So, uh, working with Matt Konzo, uh, the director of East Y, we've, we've partnered up again to start that this year. And we've had, uh, talks all spring on, on coordinating calendars. So we are going to bring that back, uh, this year, very excited. Each second grader who wants to participate will get four thirty minutes, thirty minute swim lessons with their class at the, at the Y, we'll bus them down there. We are going to, instead of, like, we did it back in, back in the first time, we did it throughout the course of the school year. Like, one did it in the fall, one did it in the winter, one did it in the spring. Principals would kind of wanted to do it in the fall together because, hey, it's warmer and these poor little kids in their swimsuits and wet hair and everything in the winter wasn't such a good thing. And spring got really busy and anyways, so we were able to work out a schedule where, uh, all, uh, ten, ten classes, I believe, will be going through September and October, the full two months, I mean, the full eight weeks. So we got a, we got a calendar, so, uh, the YMCA, um, essentially through a grant and I forgot who it's from, so I will bid that to you and I, I reached out but couldn't connect today. But we'll cost, we'll pay for the cost of the lifeguards. And then, uh, in the, at the previous time, the, uh, foundation helped pick up the majority of the cost for transportation. So we'll continue to, and they're aware of that, it's going to be a request coming from me, uh, for that. So essentially, it's just our time, uh, for our kids. And it was, it was a wonderful program. I mean, we got rated reviews, kids were, or I'm sorry, families were allowed to come watch their kids during that time if we allowed that, Y allowed that. So all in all, it's, it's a really neat thing that we're going to start back up. And hopefully it'll be, continue to be an annual thing. So it's something that second graders can look forward to going into second grade. It's kind of like, you know, you can go to camp in sixth grade and you go to DC in eighth grade, those kind of things. So, um, I appreciate the Y's support on that.
Was it full, I mean, like, did we have, like, capacity, was the room, was the, like, waiting list?
Oh, no, we, uh, when we went the first time, just about every kid participated and we were able to get every kid we have. Yeah, that's not going to be a problem. They're, they're planning on it, the maximum size of a second grade class is twenty-six. Not, not, not all classes will be twenty-six, so, but they're planning on having staff for like that.
Okay.
So, yeah, the, the only kids that would not just be, would be a family, chose not to.
And do those students then stay at the school or?
Uh, we've done it both ways, we're going to have to reevaluate that based on the numbers. If there's one kid, maybe they'll want to go and we'll just pull them out. You know, again, they're just thirty minute lessons or thirty-five. But the whole process is, you know, a good hour, fifteen minutes or whatever, by the time you get the bus and, you know, go through. It's a little longer from Jerusalem, obviously, because it's a longer bus ride. But it's a great thing. And we're one of the few that I know in the area, if any, that will offer something like that to the entire grade level. So, um, I think it's a feather in everybody's cap for these kids. Plus, the reason we picked second grade was because that's where the Y and the, the, those that teach swimming say that's the age where kids like, are interested in, can pick up on some good habits. If you wait too long, it may be a little more difficult. If you go to, you know, younger, they're maybe too young. So the second grade was the recommendation based on the Y's swimming instructors.
Hal, you know, that program was, you know, back, quite back in.
Well, we've had different versions over, over the years.
I want to say that, I don't know, it was the mid-sixties through the mid.
Really?
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, well, it's, as I say, I know it's years ago.
No, and that's wonderful. We had a special needs program, uh, probably ten years ago that we did with just our, some of our, our special needs kids. We did that for multiple years. And then that kind of died and stopped and that was more teacher driven than it was a district relationship with the Y. And so, uh, so anyways, it's, it's, it's a real good thing and I would invite any of you to come one day, if you got a moment, to, to see what goes on. It's kind of a neat thing over there.
Well, it's a great thing, that, that's what I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm sure, swimming's fun. Just quick update on our personnel. So as of today, we have hired thirteen new teachers and one new administrator. We have four teach, we've had four, uh, we have four teachers reassigned to new positions and two administrators assigned to new positions. And then we have two new title tutors. Uh, we have one opening left to fill. Plug out to the public, we are looking for a French teacher. So if anyone is, uh, aware or knows of a French teacher, uh, please call. Uh, we also increased one part-time teacher to full-time. So overall, increase of teaching staff, uh, is two and a half positions for this year. And those really two and a half come essentially because we had to add a third grade teacher over at, um, uh, Star for the Bubble Group and we added an ag teacher. Okay, that was, that's a new position. Uh, and, um, we increased the part-time cause teacher to full-time to cover some graduation requirement, uh, programs that we have. Now, I know we've added like our strength and conditioning, we've added some new things, but we've also reduced two teachers on the other end of that. So it's, it's all in how you want to look at what we're adding. So what we're adding new is, is, uh, the ag, the third grade teacher, and then the strength and conditioning. But by through the reductions and everything, it's a two and a half and a half for this year, so.
Few questions, Hal, the new administrator, and that's the name, but what?
Wes, Wes Bartlett is the new tech director. That's who I'm talking about, yeah.
And then in French, we offer four levels of French, like.
We do offer four levels of French.
And do we have two, now we have one or two?
Correct. So right now, the teacher that's.
Just Mr. Roberts.
Current Mr. Roberts, who's here, teaches, uh, ninth grade or French one and four. We've lost our French two and three, so it's.
So stupid question, we both have French two.
We're, we're, we're building the airplane as it's rolling down the runway or it just crashed and we're trying to put it back together. However you want to look at it, we don't have an answer for you. If we cannot find anyone, we're going to have to not offer that. Or we're going to have to get creative online or we're going to have to do something, something, I don't, I don't know.
I assume Mr. Roberts is fully maxed out.
Oh, yeah, and he could even begin to cover, I mean, these are. Between him and the teacher that is no longer with us, they were, they filled their classes like they were wonderful. They are wonderful. And, you know, kids were motivated to go into those programs and those numbers are in the twenties, all of them.
Very pumped, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, he's, he's phenomenal, I mean, he's amazing individual and, and, uh, the teacher that left was a great teacher. I mean, I, I don't fault her, she did some, you know, it was her own personal choice. And the problem was, it came, it came in July, the second week of July, and as of July tenth, districts don't have to let teachers out of their contract. We have people interested, they're under contract at another district. So if you're under contract after July tenth and you choose to just leave, they can pull your license. So we're kind of in a quandary, we have somebody that wants to come, maybe potentially, but they're under contract, just totally understand. I mean, I would be in the same boat as the superintendent here. So, so we're looking, uh, again, it's, it's only been, uh, we've only known about it a week. So it's been posted, it's going through the process internally and all that. But, uh, yeah, I mean, gosh, all of you, if you know anybody, get the word out, have in contact, any, me, anybody, Mr. Jerzky, anybody. We'll, we'll see what we can.
As Kate's involved in that one right now, it'd be.
He's in which ones, second?
Two, yeah.
Two, yeah.
So be, well, I guess none of us is going to, three, three.
To replace it, I mean, there's a lot of kids in that situation and, and it's because the program's been so good, um, as an elective, so. But French teachers aren't, you know, they're not churning them out, you know what I mean? It's, it's a very selected, unique field for sure, so. So that's where we're at with that. Uh, again, not a real big update on strategic plan, we're, we're kind of where we were last time, although we are going to start digging into our action plans. Uh, the meeting with our admin team coming up in the very first week of August, so I think that's going to be a lot of that. So, uh, we'll continue to hone it, again, it's going to be a living, breathing. Uh, at one point, I think, at some point, maybe August, maybe in September, we'll, as a board, I mean, we'll decide if we want to formally approve it or whatever, and I'm open to whatever the board wants to do. But we're gonna, I think, once the school year starts, we're going to start running and, and, and start to work on all these things, so. So, uh, we can talk more about that as we move forward. The parent portal is always a question that comes up.
People clamoring to get this kid.
It's, it's this Friday, so it's, it's, yep, we, well, believe it or not, no matter what time the switch is flipped, we have people immediately waiting for it. So I don't know how they know when it's flipped, or they're watching it, or they're waiting for it, or whatever.
Yeah, they're excited to do it.
So, uh, that's this Friday, uh, more realistic, it might be, you know, later Thursday, it all depends on when, uh, Mr. Quig is able to do it. So I say Friday because, but it might be midnight on, might be midnight Friday versus, you know, might be late afternoon Thursday. So it's, it's a matter of just, once it, once it's finalized and getting everything to a point where they can flip the switch, so. So we appreciate families, uh, uh, who are, again, this is for returning and current students, we want to be able to register and, we always get to eighty percent and then, man, that last twenty percent is, is a struggle. And it's, you know, it's a struggle. We get to ninety percent and I don't know if we ever get to a hundred, but we do our darndest. And the impacts of not reregistering are, we don't have current updated medical stuff, we don't have all the information if there were to be a problem. You know, you can't go on field trips because we don't have your updated stuff, I mean, there's a lot of consequences to it, but some don't care.
But the kids don't still in class.
Yes, oh, yeah, we don't deny education, we've never denied education or anything like that. And we, and we stay out of, we, we here long, I mean, it's, it's not like we don't, but, uh, it is what it is, some, and some just don't register, they don't come back, I mean, there's all kinds of things, but that's a very small percentage. Uh, okay, and then lastly, just to give you an update, or not an update, but invite you to the opening day. I think several of you came last year and I appreciate that. You're certainly invited on August fifteenth, it'll be a very similar structure that we've done, will be about eight to eleven, hopefully here at Clay High School. Uh, assuming the air conditioning gets completed, uh, Dean assures me that it, it, they're, they're telling him it will be, which is a great thing. So we'll be able to sit in a comfortable, uh, air-conditioned high school auditorium, uh, and, uh, have opening day. So that's my report unless there's any questions.
Good question, Hal, I kind of seen some media reports of other districts joining some lawsuits about the voucher program.
That's been going on for years, uh, in years. Uh, there is a, yeah, TPS, that's what made the news, TPS just joined it, they held out for years, three, four years, you know, I've talked with superintendent there multiple times about it and you, you pay a fee per kid and it's, you know, the, the question is, how much are you, you want to pay to be a part of the lawsuit that may or may not result in anything?
Kobe bought it, that we.
We are not part of it.
Okay.
No, we are not part of it. Uh, to my knowledge, I think there's only one other Lucas County district that is, other than now TPS. Most, most of us have not, again, it's not the concept, uh, I, I, the whole voucher thing is, is very frustrating for public educators because there's, the voucher doesn't come with the same accountability and, and we've had some of those discussions and I don't want to get into a private, public debate here, but, uh, the voucher, you know, yeah, and we can revisit that, I mean, as, it's, like I said, it's been going on for years now, so, you know, I'm sure they're getting closer to actually having something occur in court and all that. And so maybe people are jumping on the bandwagon at the end here, but so far I have been sold that the, the benefit outweighs the money that we would have to spend to be a part of it.
So I appreciate your update, because TPS just made a kind of vacuum for the media.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Any else?
Thank you.
You are welcome. Any old business? Okay, board committee reports, finance?
Uh, finance committee met this week, no material, I didn't sort it out.
Capital improvement?
Um, yes, we met last week. Mr. Sandwich went over some of the information that we talked about last month. It looks like the boilers, um, at Star, we had a little delay, but it looks like, um, the completion date is still going to be August first, if everything goes right. The air conditioners at Ike and Clay are scheduled to be finished the twenty-ninth and twenty-fifth respectively. And at the time of our meeting, we were seventy-six percent completed with our summer projects and I'm sure since the week has gone by, we're much further than seventy-six percent. He's very happy with, um, the work of his custodians, maintenance people, um, getting these projects completed. There's some painting going on, um, landscaping in front of the buildings to make them accessible. Other than that, that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Policy personnel, um, there are policies, please read them before voting on them at the next meeting. Academic?
Summer school, we have quite a few children who are participating in summer school. Our numbers are actually up from last year, uh, as far as meeting session one and session two at Clay High School. Facets also shown an increase in summer school participation as has Ike. Um, second and third grade, um, uh, numbers are up there as well. Um, kindergarten and first grade, this is kind of amazing, we've got seventy-four children that are participating uh, summer school this year, um, at the kindergarten, first grade level. in, uh, summer school this year, um, at the kindergarten, first grade level. Uh, we've also got some individual students. Um, we did touch on the English Language Arts State test scores, um, at our last board meeting, a little bit deeper dive, um, on, uh, some of these, uh, in some of these areas. For example, in third grade, English Language Arts, all areas had an equal percentage of near and advanced proficient students, uh, or a large percentage of students near proficient. What's really great about this is our numbers, um, with, with very few exceptions, we're up, uh, across the board from last year, which is, I know it was a big concern going in, given COVID and everything else. Um, uh, some couple other highlights, Jerusalem had the highest passage percentage of fourth grade English Language Arts students, uh, that's at eighty-seven percent. STAR was the second, sixty-five percent. Um, we recorded in the sixth grade English Language Arts our highest ever, uh, passage rate and average scaled score for the district, um, and which is really amazing. And then we previously had been below the state average in all scores categories year over year before this time. So that's a huge improvement. Obviously, when you have things that are going well, you also have opportunities that are, that are, that we can, uh, look at, uh, as a district that areas we definitely need to improve on. Seventh grade, uh, English Language Arts, um, uh, is one area that we definitely have an opportunity with. And I know there will be very increased focus, uh, increased focus in seventh and eighth grade at Facet this year in these test results. And then eighth grade, uh, English Language Arts as well. Um, so we, we definitely have a, a lot of work to do at Facet. But overall, I think the, the community can be very proud of, um, the gains that have been made this year, uh, by the students, uh, thanks to, uh, very caring teachers and, uh, and leadership of this district. So, uh, that, uh, that concludes the academic report.
Thank you. Uh, legislative liaison?
Nothing in the second.
Student achievement liaison?
Nothing.
Okay, board discussion. I need to appoint a delegate and an alternate. Uh, Mr. Shane, would you please be the delegate for, um, OSBA capital?
Certainly.
Um, Mr. Savick, would you be the alternate?
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you. And I have a few other things from OSBA. On August seventh, from two to four, there'll be an open house at the TriStar Career Center in Salina. It's in conjunction with the Southwest Region to bring the two regions together. Um, Capitol Conference is November fifteenth through the fifteenth. Registration opens July twenty-fifth. Housing opens September twenty-first. There have a hundred and fifty-six breakout sessions scheduled and there are three hundred and forty-three booths for the trade show. I also want to update everyone on the fact that Ohio left NSBA, or the National School Board Association, about a year and a half ago with a number of other states. And since then, Ohio's taken a leadership role in the development of a new association, COSSPA, COSPA, or COSPA, they haven't decided yet. Um, the organization is chartered in South Carolina because of the research that was done. It was chosen because of their rules and regulations on nonprofits. Rick Lewis, our OSBA director, is one of four of the directors, executive directors in the new association. There are twenty-two member states as of right now and since, since this was all put together, six more states have left NSBA, including Texas and California. We really don't expect Texas and California to join COSPA because they're kind of rogue states anyway, but, um, budgets, finance, policy and bylaws are all under, um, consideration. They have four national programs developed already, uh, Urban Board Symposium in Atlanta in September. January is a leadership conference in Savannah. March is a conference in Tampa. And next September is a federal advocacy in Washington, DC. Um, president-elect of OSBA is Chris Barwick from Toledo Public Schools. And I have one more year to serve on the Board of Governance and on the Board of Trustees. Thank goodness for Zoom and not having to travel up to Columbus. Tax-free shopping days are August sixth and seventh. So if you're out to buy anything for your children, hold off. Anything else from board members? Okay, executive session, uh, for the appointment. Employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of an employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employee, official, licensee or student, unless the employee, official licensee or student requests a public hearing. And preparing for conducting a reviewing negotiations or a bargaining session with employees. I need a motion to go into executive session, please.
Salute.
Uh, second?
Second.
Discussion?